Oh, I got two minutes. Sure. No idea. I know it was there this morning.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It was, well, it's landing different.
Oh, the, uh, it's okay.
So I'll be here to hopefully answer those.
Okay.
Yeah. Just big pile.
No.
I have no one signed in.
So we're here for, um, I have an answer for you after session.
I'm curious first. Maybe next year we can do Halloween topics. What do you think?
I could, I could dress up as a bricklayer.
I was like gonna wear like cat ears or something and I'm like, no, I feel like I gotta be here another year first.
Yeah, it's easy and stuff.
I know. I do, I have a glow-in-the-dark skeleton cat suit, I thought. Like, I could put a suit over it, you know? But then I, but then I'd want the lights off, so. At least for a little bit. I got nine thirty.
Do you have your lips nicer? No, it's nine thirty.
I got nine thirty.
Good morning, everyone. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the people of our land for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The prayer today, Heavenly Father, thank you for your goodness and faithfulness in my life. Thank you for refreshing and renewing my heart. Fill me with your peace, fill me with your strength, help me to do good, and stand firm until I see the, my harvest of blessings. In Jesus' name, amen. Public comment, has anybody signed in? Item number two, Amy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. On October twenty-second, I approve for the Department of Water Resources hiring Matthew Taylor to the position of Maintenance Worker Number Two Three Three Zero to be effective November tenth, twenty twenty-five, at a rate of twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. On October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, I concurred with the Claridan Township Trustees on a liquor license and not requesting a hearing on that liquor license, which is being requested by Shotgun Start LLC, Pleasant Hills Golf Course located at One Three Four Six One Aquila Road, Chardon, Ohio, October T R F O One Zero 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 Seven Four Six Three Dash One, and that's all.
Thank you. Items three and four are the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the meetings of August nineteenth and the special meeting for August twenty-fourth.
Second the motion.
Mr. Bricky?
Aye.
Mr. DeBorick?
Yes. Maintenance?
Hello.
Not used to coming up here, so we're.
I know, I was, I'm thrown off too. I'm like, what's going on with the financials?
Is it my turn?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm Ms. Zerina with the Maintenance Department, and I have item number five. The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve and execute the contract agreement with Deandre Landscaping Design LTD Doing Businesses U.S. Lawns Cleveland East for the snow plowing, salting, and/or cindering of the Geogga County parking lots. Chardon area, there's five locations, one Geogga County offices, two ge-, uh, courthouses, three courthouse annex, four parking lot two oh eight East Park Street, and five East Park offices. Complex for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven seasons in the amount of one oh eight six hundred, that's one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred, fifty-four thousand, three hundred for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, and fifty-four thousand, three hundred for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. And salt in the amount of one sixty-five for halftime, in the amount of forty thousand for a not-to-exceed amount of one forty-eight, six hundred for a two-year period. The bid bond submitted shall be held in the performance bond for this project.
I feel like we should get you a glass of water after.
That was a long motion. Um, so this building is not included in that? Is that correct?
No.
Okay, so who, who handles the snow plow for this?
For here, McCowsky, right now. That contract will end.
Okay, so that's a separate contract?
Yes.
Okay. And when, when did you say that ends?
Um, in twenty twenty-six, for McCowsky, for this building.
Okay, got it. Um, so I'll move to approve item number five.
Second.
Mr. Bricky?
Aye.
Mr. DeBorick?
Yes.
Thanks. It is on the financials. Oh, I.
Contract encumbrance is on the financials.
That's what I was wondering.
Next motion, so it's on prior to that, so we can get that contract encumbrance open before the contract begins.
Okay.
So.
It's just a small encumbrance, it's not for the full amount of the contract though, because I think they put it on before they were aware of what all the final costs were, so.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it.
Um, morning Commissioners. Adrian Gordon with Commissioners Office. Today's financials include an appropriations transfer to the Sheriff for miscellaneous refunds, reimbursements, and web checks that were deposited into the General Fund. There's cash transfer from the General Fund to Community Development for their third quarter twenty twenty-five payroll funding and a reimbursement for their fourth quarter operational commitment for twenty twenty-five, and there's one from the General Fund to the Sheriff's Victims of Crime Act Fund to pay local match for VOCA Grant Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash V O C A Dash One Three Five Nine Oh One Eight Six Four, and from the General Fund to the Board of D D for Gaswell Proceeds from July through September of twenty twenty-five, and also from the General Fund to Community Development, Metz and Baum, and the Board of Elections for the third quarter twenty twenty-five interest transfers. There's a travel encumbrance from the Eng-, uh, from the Commissioners Office to attend the CCAO Winter Conference in Columbus, Ohio. There's a formal contract P O from Community Development to Chardon Local Schools for the Demo and Site Revitalization Grant that was used to clear old foundations at their new bus garage site, and a formal contract P O from the Commissioners and Maintenance to Ohio Paving and Construction Company for the repave project at the Geogga Safety Center. Among the vouchers are thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents from the Commissioners Office to the Geogga County Airport Authority for the local match on pay request number five of the parallel, parallel taxiway project, and one hundred and nine thousand, four ninety-nine, sixty-four from the County Engineer to Roniak Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Wilson Mills Road.
All right, you moved. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you.
That was it? All right. I didn't want to interrupt the discussion.
Okay, good.
Um, I move to approve those financials.
Second. Call for vote.
Commissioner Bricky?
Aye.
Mr. DeBorick?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next item here is the Commissioners Office's request in the Board, approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the request for partial payment number twenty-five for Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Geogga County Courthouse Expansion Project, GMP Phase One and Two, expenses in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-one cents, and this has been approved by N V five as well as, uh, um, the prevailing wage by Nick Goris, so.
Okay. Um, I move to approve item number seven.
Second. Call for vote.
Mr. Bricky?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Adrian.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Oh.
No, you, there's an updated agenda. I'm sorry, Nicole. She was good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. I'm Dr. Vanessa Povajaya from the Berkshire Local School District, and I am the Director of Professional Learning and Community Outreach. Um, I'm asking, requesting that the Board approve and execute a letter of support for an application to the T-Mobile Hometown Grant for funding of our Berkshire Makerspace Equipment Enhancement Project. Um, to date, our equipment is over nine years old. Typically, Makerspace, Hacker Spaces need to be updated within six years' time. Um, we are working with a number of local entities, the American Legion, the Geogga County Sheriff's Department, as well as Burton Chamber of Commerce. We've done projects with the Geogga Retired Teachers Association, as well as recently, we are working to collaborate with Torchlight Youth Mentoring Alliance for a project for our foster youth in the community, so we are asking the, um, for approval and support. Thank you.
Can you talk about the Makerspace? What, you know, what happens there? What kind of equipment you have and so forth?
Oh, sure, absolutely. So to date, we have, um, uh, three D printers, um, laser engravers, Roland, uh, massive printer. Those can run anywhere upwards of, um, thirty thousand dollars in general, um, for laser printing, um, three D scanners, um, and we have done a lot of, um, kind of projects with even the early, um, children, like in our early childhood, like the makey, makeys, and little, um, craft projects. So a perfect example is, um, we're going to be creating birdhouses and, um, Jenga, Jenga games, as well as, um, cornhole boards for, um, Torchlight Youth Mentoring Alliance. So our students actually work on the design of those projects with the engineering design process in collaboration with a full-time teacher that we have employed. We've, we invest annually over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in full-time staff to support all of these projects, um, and they coach our, all of our teachers' grades PK through twelve. Um, so they push into the classroom, design the project collaboratively, and then go into the Makerspace, Hacker Space area and actually, um, lift it to fruition. So it's actually a really interesting, um, STEAM education initiative. We also have two mini, uh, three D printers inside of our computer science lab that we engage our fifth through eighth grade students and advanced, um, students that are in advanced courses in the IT pathway.
Uh, I think you talk about the grant, what the T-Mobile hometown grant is.
Absolutely. It's a grant that, um, typically, um, is for rural hometown, um, areas, typically for populations under fifty thousand, um, and it's a grant that I've gone for previously, have not secured it, but I'm always attempting because it's a sixty percent chance, so, um, uh, but it's actually specifically targeted for local rural community-based projects, so I thought that this was a way to support, um, the school district and the large, the community at large.
What's the max you can get from the grant?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Um, I move to approve item number eight.
Second. Call for vote.
Mr. Bricky?
Aye.
Yes. Great program.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay. Common Police Court.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Nicole Walker, Adult Probation Department with the Common Police Court. We're requesting the Board to approve and execute revised Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction Community Corrections Grant Agreement, Community Corrections Act Two Point Oh, Grant Exhibit A and B for TCAP, uh, for the period of July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. This is an increase of eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars for a new total award amount in the amount of five hundred, forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars with no local match.
So Nicole, why are these additional funds being offered now?
There was an addendum to our CCA Two Point Oh that they do not do until after the original grant was approved.
Okay. So it's, it's like a statewide adjustment, or is it based on your project cost, or both?
Statewide adjustment.
Okay. All right, very good. Um, I move to approve item number nine.
Second the motion. Call for vote.
Commissioner Bricky?
Aye.
Mr. DeBorick?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Oh, yeah, gotta get our, get our Sharpie time. Okay. They are labeled.
All right. So here, again, for replats, like usual, three replats. They were approved at the October sixteenth Planning Commission, uh, meeting. The first one is, uh, Planning Commission's requesting the Board approve and execute the final plat for Berkshire Industrial Park. It's a replat of Sublot Six located in Phase One, and Sublot Sixteen in Phase Two is going to create a Sublot Six R containing three point nine nine four five acres, and that's about it.
So I, I suspect the answer to this is it depends, but what happens with property taxes when you consolidate lots?
Uh, in theory, it goes down, but, um, not, it's a calculation by the Auditor's Office.
Yeah.
In theory, if you're consolidating a lot, you're taking one out of, uh, potential building as a standalone building site.
Right.
But the exact amount and how the Auditor's looks, looks at it, I'm not quite sure.
Okay. Um, yeah, I was just curious how that works. I'll move to approve item number ten.
Second. Call for vote.
Mr. Bricky?
Aye.
Mr. DeBorick?
Yes.
Do you want me to move on?
Please.
Okay. Uh, the next one is, uh, the Planning Commission's requesting the Board approve and execute the final plat for Chagrin Heights subdivision. Replat of Sublots Two Eighteen and Two Nineteen. It's gonna create Sublot Two Eighteen R, gonna total point six two four four acres. It's located in, uh, Russell Township, again, in the Chagrin Heights subdivision.
I move to approve.
Second. Call for vote.
Mr. Bricky?
Aye.
Mr. DeBorick?
Yes.
Okay, and then the last one, uh, the Planning Commission is requesting the Board approve and execute the final plat for Chagrin Falls Park, replat of Sublots One Thousand Sixty-One through One Thousand Sixty-Seven. It's gonna create Sublot One Thousand Sixty-One R totaling point three two one four acres. Again, it's located in Bainbridge Township.
I move to approve.
Second. Call for vote.
Commissioner Bricky?
Aye.
Mr. DeBorick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Shane.
Shane Hajar with the Geogga County Engineers Office.
You're on my shirt, you have Mr. DeBorick. At least it was closed. Have to buy him a new suit next.
I didn't think it was in a knife.
Yeah.
Uh, item number thirteen, the Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute change order number one and final, decreasing the contract with Ronnie Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Fairmont Road, County Highway Sixteen, Section C through E, in Russell, Newbury Township in the amount of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifteen cents.
Second. Call for vote.
Mr. Bricky?
Aye.
Yes.
Related to that project, the County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute change order, oh, never mind, we did this in a different order. Okay. Item number fourteen is for Sperry Road, uh, requesting the Board approve and execute change order number one and final, decreasing the contract with Roniak Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Sperry Road, County Highway Twelve, Sections B through G, in Newbury, Russell, and Chester Townships in the amount of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
Oh, yeah, you're saving the taxpayers money. Two items in a row.
Working hard.
Do this all day long. All right, move to approve item number fourteen.
Second the motion, discussion.
Sure.
What was the two, what, what was the reason for decreasing?
Uh, we build in, uh, contingency quantity into our projects. Um, the roads aren't, uh, exactly the same width. The asphalt material doesn't go down at an exact perfect, uh, mat thickness, so there's some variability. We allow for a little bit of, uh, contingency quantity, but it's built in so that, uh, we are able to execute in the field and with the hopes that we won't need or use all of it, and that's generally the reason why we have these decreases.
Thank you. Call for vote.
Mr. Bricky?
Aye.
Mr. DeBorick?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, uh, is Ohio Public Works Request, uh, County Engineers Office requesting the Board approve and authorize James W. DeVorek, Board Member and Chief Executive Officer, to execute the Ohio Public Works Commission Appendix E Disbursement Request Form and Certification to order the release of funds for the state portion of our OPWC grant for the asphalt resurfacing of Sperry Road, Sections B through G, in Chester, Newbury, and Russell Township in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
I move to approve.
Second, with discussion.
Okay.
Is that OPWC, is that fifty percent of the project?
Approximately. We applied for, uh, half a million dollar grant, uh, applied towards the first million dollars of the project, uh, so that we were able to fully use that grant.
Thank you. Call for vote.
Commissioner Bricky?
Aye.
Mr. DeBorick?
Yes.
Thank you. Similarly, item number sixteen, the Geogga County Engineers Office requesting the Board approve and authorize James W. DeVorek, Board Member and Chief Executive Officer, to execute Public, Public Works Commission Appendix E Disbursement Request Form and Certification Number One in order to release funds for the state portion of our OPWC grant for the asphalt resurfacing of Fairmont Road, Section C through E, in Newbury and Russell Township in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
I move to approve.
Second. Call for vote.
Mr. Bricky?
Aye.
Mr. DeBorick?
Yes.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Shane.
Have a good day.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Austin Rice, EMA. Um, I have item number seventeen, which is a request for the approval of the Geogga County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Um, this is a plan that, uh, the county does every five years.
Austin, can you talk about the process for making the plan?
Sure. Um, this is a little bit more of a involved process for this plan. Um, we probably started this one around January or February of this year. Um, there's many months of meeting, uh, you know, formal meetings and plans that we have to do. Um, a process we put together, lots of stakeholders involved. Um, and specifically this time, we included making a, um, public, ha, more of an interactive hazard mitigation website with the help of GIS and such. So that took many months to go through that process, and then after that, uh, we have to submit this to the state for state approval, and, um, they do their review, send it back to us with recommend, recommendations and changes or suggested, uh, you know, uh, updates that, uh, we didn't do or needed to do, um, because there were some regulation changes, and so we do that, send it back to them, and then recently, we just got our approval letter a few weeks ago, maybe, two weeks ago now. So, um, the next step would be resolution for the county's adoption, um, which would, uh, make townships eligible in this case, or, or under the plan for, uh, any types of, uh, grant or financial assistance, and then, uh, after this, we would have to go for adoption with Chardon, Middlefield, South Russell, and Burton. After all those resolutions, submit it back to the state, and then we work with FEMA to get the final approval.
Okay.
When does the tableed process come in?
Uh, the, 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 well, the, for the planning process, we did a lot of that early on in some of those planning meetings. Um, so about once a month for the first four or five months of the year, earlier this year, we had big planning sessions.
Yes. I always think reports like this are interesting because you have to put little like factoids, and, um, so Mr. DeBorick, I'm gonna quiz you on one of the facts. How many, what's the average snowfall in Geogga County per year? How many inches?
Probably, uh, uh, forty-two and a half inches.
Hundred and five inches per year, and we're the snowiest county in the state of Ohio.
Yes.
Yeah, it's always fun.
Yeah, so anyway, I think those kind of things are interesting, and we're kind of an old county, but a wealthy county, so there's, there's some facts like that in it. Uh, one thing I noticed was that, I think it said that no adjacent counties participated in creating the plan?
Yeah, well, um, we did have Cuyahoga County show up, um, to one or two of the planning meetings.
Okay.
Um, but besides them, no one else did participate. Uh, we, that, that, that's very common.
Okay.
We didn't and or weren't invited to any of the adjacent counties' planning processes. We did invite all the adjacent counties. Um, out of eighty-eight counties in the state of Ohio, I believe about eighty of them hire consultants, uh, affirm to do this plan for them.
Oh, interesting.
Very expensive.
Yeah.
And so we are one of few counties that don't do that. Um, and so Cuyahoga actually came to a few of our meetings early on to observe that because the prices are getting so expensive, they didn't think they'd be able to.
Yeah.
Swing it, and they realized there's a lot of work involved, and they're like, oh, we'll figure out how to pay for it.
Yeah.
So.
So how, how much do you think you save taxpayers by doing this in-house versus farming it out?
I'm not entirely certain.
Yeah.
But I do know that we were able to get a twenty-seven thousand dollar-ish grant, about that much, um, that came to the county instead of going towards the consultant fees.
Yeah.
Um, because we did it ourselves.
Yeah.
So we were able to upgrade equipment and things with that. Um, but that would go towards the consultant fees if we were to do that, and that wouldn't have even covered it. Um, so, but I don't know exactly what the fees would have been.
Yeah, I mean, I would think it's probably a six-figure.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't entertain the, uh.
Yeah.
Any consultants for it.
Well, I mean, I think that's impressive. I mean, particularly if you have a small team and you were able to, to do this all in-house and, and get the approval that you needed, so.
Yeah, we, um, we did, we did, we did pretty good. Um, I, it went a little bit smoother than I was expecting, so it went well.
All right, very good. Yeah, I was just a little concerned about that, about the neighboring counties not participating, and I didn't know if there was better cooperation otherwise with the neighboring counties, or if this was.
I, so I've been here a little more than eight years. I, so I've been here a little more than eight years, and so I've participated in this twice. And in neither time, any neighboring county helped us with our planning process, and we weren't invited to any county's process ourselves. So I assume that must be the norm, or at least in this area.
Yeah.
Like I said, we did get Cuyahoga to participate in at least one or two planning meetings.
Yeah, they just wanted to like observe.
Yeah, they wanted to observe.
All right.
Yeah.
Very good. Well, I'll make a motion to approve item number 17.
Second emotion, call for vote.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Austin, good work.
Thank you.
Good morning. Charles Teeketch, Maintenance Department. I have one item on the agenda, number 18. The Maintenance Department is requesting the board accept and approve the following design firm rankings in compliance with ORC 153.69A and evaluation of statement of interest and qualification responses received for providing professional design and contract administration services for expansion and renovation of the county's animal shelter kennels, including one TC Architects Incorporated, two LDA Architects Incorporated, and three Verdantis LLC. And further select TC Architects Incorporated as the most qualified firm to provide professional design and contract administration services in accordance with ORC 153.69B and authorize commencement of contract negotiations.
So price doesn't factor into this at all?
Not at this stage.
Okay, not at this stage. I got it, all right, so that's, I don't think.
This is based pure on, on their qualifications and their expertise.
Yeah, have they, have they worked on a dog shelter or an animal veterinary clinic or whatever before? I know that was part of it, yeah. Have they worked with the county government before? Okay, so, because I don't think I have been here for this process before. So that was, I was a little thrown off by price not coming into it, although I know it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, like if you're buying snowplow removal, right? There is, those qualifications do make a difference.
They do, yes.
And somebody who's, who's making more an hour may give you a better product and quicker or, you know, whatever. But, but that's, so that's the next part of the process then, is we would look at pricing.
And then I'll be back with a proposed contract in price.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. You have any questions, Mr. DeBorak?
I like the process. Where you got it to this point, thanks for your hard work on it.
Sure.
I make a motion to approve item number 18.
Second emotion, call for vote.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Gorres, Water Resources. First item we have on the agenda is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the updated accounting forms, authorization form and payroll authorization form. Just changing names, adding in a deputy and making sure we have people who can sign for our payroll.
That's what I was going to ask, so it's just adding Mark, is that what it was?
Mark, and then we, I think we removed one individual.
Okay.
Karen, yeah.
We don't need to name them if you.
So, that's fine.
Sorry.
I move to approve item number 19.
Second emotion, call for vote.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorak?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract with Dex Imaging to provide all parts, labor, travel for all service, preventative maintenance toner and image units on copy machines listed, six in total, one wide format printer. As set forth in our customer agreement, Exhibits A and B, and removal of obsolete copy machines for the department for a period of five years effective October 28, 2025 in the amount not to exceed $39,994 and change. It's the average of about $8,000 a year. It'll replace all the copiers that we have at the lab, the garage, McFarland, and two in the office. So outdated equipment, worked with ADP to bring Dex onboard. It'll also replace our wide format scanner that is used.
Is this price comparable to what it's been in the past?
It's a, obviously, yes. I'm going to say the cost for, because it includes toner, it includes the service, so it's a lump sum area. It's in line with what we see. Our other, we were recent, before we were on contract with Lake Business, they couldn't compete. They actually, Dex actually worked with us and even gave us some opinions on our, our billing. We took our invoices from a color print, which was costing us more to a black and white. We're like, why is it color? So they've actually also made recommendations to help us keep our costs down.
I know they're used throughout the county.
So.
Then the other question is, was there any analysis done to show that like this service contract is more cost-effective than paying for repairs and parts on like an ad hoc basis?
Uh, again, working with ADP, that was their recommendation to go with the Dex. That's who they're using and their service contract. We've compared our Lake Business, what we were getting with them, the costs were going up. And we were due up for a new contract with new equipment. So I think from a standpoint of matching up with what the, what the county is doing across the board, especially in this building with the Dex, I think it's a, it was, it was preferred as we're watching our dollars and cents for.
Yeah.
You know, all of our revenue comes from our accounts, right? So anything we spent, so we got to keep that as minimal as possible as we know costs are going up, so.
Yeah.
Doing our best to keep it down.
Okay, very good.
We actually eliminated one unit from use. We had two in our office, only because we had two at 470, which was a pretty large office. We had one on each end, so we brought them both here. So we actually eliminated one whole unit as part of this process.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, and I mean, I would think that if you have the service contract, if something goes wrong, someone's quickly responding to it.
Correct.
I assume, so you can go down a unit without a disruption in service.
Tried to match them up if we had to, so everybody's similar, you know, the units are similar across the board.
Yeah. I move to approve item number 20.
Second emotion, call for vote.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. My favorite topic. Credit cards.
Okay, so 21 is the 11th amended resolution approving the use of county credit cards. And it is including to add a user for the county police court, removing an employee, adding a user for the commissioner's office, adding users on the county engineers credit union visa, adding their Giant Eagle PNC visa and their Home Depot commercial account, and then removing those former employees from the county police court, commissioner's office, county engineers office and Department of Water Resources employee. So that is number 21. 22, 23.
Can I just ask?
Sure.
So it's just people are joining the county and leaving the county, and that's, okay, got it.
So as, as we have like Mr. Jimmison coming into our office, we have to add him on as an approved user and then do the application, which is one of those next steps in the process. And then as you have employees that are either designing or retiring, that were previous users, we have to take those off of the list. So that is the changes that you're going to see within the exhibit itself. That sets the limits, the approval of those users on those cards. 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26 are all of the applications for use for those cards. So county police court, commissioner's office, and then those three separate applications for the engineers office.
Got it.
27 is the certification request to the county auditor and request to commissioner's office for the quarterly use of that CC visa and Home Depot for the county engineers office for the quarters.
So I'll move to approve item number 21 through 27.
Second emotion, call for vote.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorak?
Yes.
Okay. The next item, which is number 28, is the, trying to get to that in the pile.
Oh, the Neocap.
The Neocap. There's only two of these that are both of you, the rest of them, I think, are Jim. So number 28 is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 25-194, reappointing Michael Murphy to the Northeast Ohio Community Alternative Program Neocap Facility Governing Board for a term November 10, 2025 through November 9, 2028. Mr. Murphy was initially appointed to fill out the Russ of Marner Drums term, and then he was reappointed for a full term, and he is requested to be reappointed for a new term.
It looks like Mr. Murphy is the executive director of Lake Area Recovery Center. And then it seems like the rest of the board does have some Geogu-based members on.
Right.
So you're okay with?
I'm comfortable.
With a non-Geogu? All right, I'll move to approve item number 28.
Second, call for vote.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorak?
Yes.
Item number 29, the commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute change order number 15, increasing the contract with Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Geogu County Courthouse Expansion Project, GMP Phase 1 and Phase 2, for the purchase, delivery and installation of 17 Samsung commercial displays, 10 65-inch interactive screens, 4 50-inch 4K UHD and 3 43-inch 4K UHD, along with three Logitech rally bars and Tap IP bundles and mounts not covered in the original contract in the amount of $44,961. So I do have some amplifying information on this particular agenda item. So back in June, the ADP board approved this item. Back then, the cost was $33,500. In the four months, it has gone up to $44,961. That's a total increase of $11,461. When I had asked NV5 for the reasoning behind the difference in cost, it was noted that it was escalation and inflation, which is an Infinity markup and a subcontractor markup were the reasonings that were given. I think also through this process for this agenda item, it was noted that Court IT was not involved in the review of the change order, so that's an adjustment we're going to have to make going forward in terms of the reviews of the change order and making sure that, especially in the technology piece, that both ADP and Court IT are involved in the review of the change orders. So were they, they were involved now, or they haven't been involved? Yes, we've looped them in. Hi, we have Velto here. So I don't know if you have anything you want to say, Velto, but I think through this discussion of this particular agenda item, we have uncovered some of those procedural oversights that have been happening with change orders in general, so. So that's the only adjustment and additional information. I don't know, Velto, if you had anything else that you'd heard from Jared. I had just kind of gotten that broad overview for the, at least the price differential, which I know you may not be in on, so to speak.
Yes, I believe.
Oh, come on. Come to a microphone, just for the folks at home.
Sure.
Thank you.
I believe the quote in June did not include Infinity's installation and their markup process in addition to, I don't know, inflation and tariffs, whatever else they cited. Additionally, I know the courts made efforts to reuse equipments and use grant funding to pay for portions of this part of the project. So we did cover some of the equipment within this.
Okay, so this 44.9, that, that's our portion, or that's total?
That's total.
Okay, and then what part is the grant funding going to cover?
No, that's, the 44.9 is the commissioner's portion after the court's portion, after we already covered, after.
So.
That's our bill.
Okay, so the 33.5, did that not include whatever the grant was going to? I don't understand, I'm getting a little confused. So what, what is the grant covering that's not listed here?
The, the 33.5, or the, yes, and this was after the reuse of equipment and after the grant.
Okay.
So the increase was on that 33.5. And both, both figures were after the reuse and the grant.
Okay. Could you talk about where these TVs are going to go? And I'll just be like blunt where my concern is, which is that there are a lot of televisions in this building that are never turned on. And so I don't want the taxpayers, I mean, I, I think when I toured, it looks like in the lunchroom, there's a television. Who is turning that TV on? What are they wa, you know what I mean? Is there Netflix on there? Is there a cable TV? Like, what is somebody watching in the lunchroom on, on a television? Like, how, so where are these going? Who's using them? I'd, I'd like a little explanation on that.
Certainly. I'll try to go by memory floor by floor. So our clerk's office and our probation department are on the first floor. Their break rooms double as their conference room. So the, it's technically their conference rooms that have the, the video conferencing equipment attached to those TVs. Each floor has a display that will have, for example, the docket for the day.
Yeah.
You know, informational.
Okay.
Displays for the public. Apart from those, we have other conference rooms and two jury rooms that have the displays and the video conferencing equipment within there. Some of the conference rooms only have the displays and not the video conference equipment.
Okay. And, and so then what is the grant covering?
The grant was a probation grant that covered the probation break room, video conference equipment and display.
How, like, how are they using these TVs for the, for conferencing? Can you talk about that?
Sure. We, for our, our hearings, we are Zoom rooms-based operation, and we have, extensively, we use Zoom rooms for hearings. And then outside of that, we also use Zoom rooms for, or just Zoom or Teams or, you know, whatever, what have you, for communication that if we can do that to not have to travel or, you know.
Right, right, I, I understand that, okay.
Right.
And so probation would use that as in addition to the, the judges and the magistrates?
Yes.
Okay.
When I view the, the job site at least once a month, twice a month, I know that right from the get-go, there was, you know, indentations in the wall for this monitor, that monitor. So I know there's a lot of them. So I'm, I'm not shocked about the number, but, you know, the increase and the inflation and everything, that's, that's, that's a real kicker, so.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised by that jump. And, I mean, are we, do we competitively bid this? Is this like a state bid issue, or they just give us these prices and we take them?
I'd have to ask Infinity what their process is in obtaining the quote. I'm not sure what they do on the scene.
Okay. Do you feel comfortable with this report?
I'm comfortable with it because at the end of this project and this building, we had a bunch of cameras, but the IT service that did the installation during the construction didn't gel well with all our cameras. And I think with this project, we made sure that the contractor that's doing all the watching is connected to the, all the monitors. So that part I'm comfortable with, so. It's just the inflation and maybe tariffs, I, I don't know, so.
I'll move to approve item number 29.
Second emotion, call for vote.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorak?
Yes.
Okay, item number 30. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve a regrade of the Director of Maintenance Building and Grounds, number 1901, position from an E15 to an E16 to be effective October 28, 2025. The reason for this is taking a second look at the job description, which wasn't updated since 2007. The Maintenance Department since that time has grown from approximately eight employees to over 30. Also, coming in at an E16 pay band would allow room for growth. I think there's greater depth there considering the other things we're looking at as far as compensation for employees. So the E16 will start us off at, I think, on the early end, in the early steps, opportunity for this person to be with us for a greater period of time without having to make another adjustment to the job description. I move to approve.
Second, call for vote.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorak?
Yes. Item 31, public comment. Those wishing to make a comment or ask a question on matters of concern, please raise your hand to be called upon. Begin by stating your full name and address, and we'll have up to three minutes to comment or ask a question. We are kindly asked to refrain from disorderly or disruptive conduct.
Yes, I am a gentleman of ownership, I suppose.
The microphone would be helpful.
Okay, that's fine. The young lady who just spoke, I don't know if I can turn this thing or not.
I am, there we go, maybe? Can everybody hear me? Okay. The previous presenter on behalf of NV5, can you state your name again, please?
I, I'm actually with the courts, I'm not with NV5, Velta Moisio.
I'm sorry?
Velta Moisio.
Okay. Is that spellable? Thank you. Okay.
Tom Jones, Auburn Township. I noticed downstairs in the monitor, there's a meeting scheduled for six to nine o'clock with the Planning Commission tonight. Does anybody know what the purpose of that meeting is?
It sounds like Nick does.
Farmland Reservation.
Oh, right, right.
Okay.
Good call. I would not have remembered that.
Any other? Step up to the microphone, please.
Is this okay?
Yes.
Thank you for having me today. My name is Sharon Wu, I live in Otoonai, Nauru, Fairport Harbor. Today I come here to say something about, about China. I came to the United States in 2008 as an international student legally, and then I applied asylum because I was persecuted in China. Today I saw a lot of things about China, and China actually is a raging war at us. As a US citizen, I want to say something I heard while I was in China. In 1995, as an international, as a first-year college student, I had, I attended a class lectured by a military officer. In the class, he said about, something about restrict, unrestricted warfare. So basically, they use all ways, all means to defeat the enemies. At that time, specifically, the enemy is the United States. So he talked about like propaganda warfare, chemical warfare, and bioweapons and all means. So I especially aware the, he mentioned the bioweapons or chemical weapons. I asked him a question, and if you use such weapons, you, you not only defeat the enemies, also defeat our people. And do you, are you going to hand out masks to our people to protect them? He said, no, just defeat the enemies. So he means as long as they can defeat the enemies, they don't care Chinese people. So at that time, I realized they are planning and that they are doing something. And actually, the whole world got to know restricted warfare in 1999 through a book translated into English. In 2020, when the COVID-19 pandemic occurred, I realized this is something they talked about before and come to true. So nowadays, chemical warfare, like fentanyl and all other things, they have not just Wuhan lab, but they also have labs in underground in mountains. So that's really something we should be aware and get prepared. Not that just some, when we draw this, like bring up this question, some politicians said this is a federal level's issue, we don't need to know it. But when you, when we heard in May this year, a Chinese student, they could use a fake passport to smuggle every weapons to United States secretly, but it got caught at the Detroit Airport. This is something I think we, we need to think more about it. The second thing is the, the propaganda warfare. And the internet really bring people like cross borders and they have paid internet influencers, they pay, they give them, if you post this video we made, you can get a hundred dollars.
We, we have a three-minute limit, so.
Okay, sure.
Your time is up.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
If you want to provide additional comments, we do have an email address. You can email them to us and we'll, we'll read them.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go to the next item. Board discussion.
I just wanted to put this on here to briefly talk about, we have, Planning Commission has three board appointments that will be coming due at the end of the year. So we are working on a press release to post to the website and to the Facebook page, as well as the application that in working with our new Deputy County Administrator, we've added a little bit to that application to expand on what we're requesting for information from the applicant. And as well as the Board of Developmental Disabilities has a board appointment that needs to be made by the end of November. The Board of Developmental Disabilities did some application acceptance and interviews and provided that information to the board. I'm just looking for guidance from the board on how you may want to move forward on the rest of that process on your side and in making a decision. The appointment has to be made before the end of November.
To be honest, I, I saw the resumes come across, I, I looked at those, but then they sent the applications, and I haven't had a chance to, to look at that.
Right.
So, I mean, that, that was what I was, I was interested, not just, you know, what are people's qualifications, but like, why, why do they want to serve on this board? You know?
Right.
That was, that's what, to me, was, was missing, you know, do they understand the commitments and so forth? So I, I, I want to look at those applications and then assuming that all seems fine, I guess we could go forward with the appointment. I, I don't think we need to interview folks unless you feel, or the rest of the board feels differently.
Well, I agree. I mean, as long as, you know, right people, qualifications or have a heart in that position. But I like your process, I like hearing lightning elsewhere openings, so it's all good.
I also got an email this morning from Christine LaComiac on the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. Currently, there are eight members. There's nine positions total on the board. One of them is a vacant position that belongs to the state. The state recently just made an appointment, but we're not a hundred percent clear. It may be a current appointment of the county commissioners. So if that is the case, then he'll have to resign from our side as an appointment, and then we will have to go out to advertise to fill that, that position. She sent over a revised application to meet the new requirements that will be necessary in order to fill those now reduced board positions. So the county will have six and the state will have three positions that have to be filled, but they have to meet certain criteria. So I'll be sharing that with all of you to, for additional input on whether there's anything else you would like to make changes on before we then move forward with that. So I'm kind of waiting to get an answer officially on whether we need to accept that resignation of that appointment before we can move forward. But I just wanted to give you a heads up that that will be coming down the road.
And when, when is that one due, or we don't know yet?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
Because it was a, there was a vacancy on the state's side. And so they filled it, but now we have a vacancy on our side that wasn't expected until next year.
We'll have to go over the details with Christina LaComiac, because a couple of years ago, we decreased the number of people on there, so I got to be refreshed with that, so.
Correct, it went from fourteen down to nine. And commissioners have six of those appointees and the state has three. And currently, all of our positions were filled through 2026, and then they would start to decline from there. So as positions were being vacated, we reduced that board size down from fourteen down to currently the eight that we have. But we are waiting for the state to, to fill that third on their side. And so there's kind of a little bit of a shift that's happening right now that we're trying to get finalization on that information. So just to kind of keep you in the loop as to like what is coming down and, and how we want to look at doing board appointments that will be coming due for January. Because there are several departmental annual boards that will be coming due, that are always due at the end of December on like what we want to do, how we want to look at that process for how you want to fill those for next year.
Yeah, I just want, I mean, my big thing is just making sure we're advertising for them. Just because there's somebody in the seat and they want to continue, I mean, that's great, I'm glad there are people that want to serve the county, but I do think we should open it up to allow other people and make sure the media is aware and League Women Voters is aware and other organizations at the county that can, can advertise those, collaborate with us and, and advertising those openings.
So yes, Max is, we're finalizing the location on where we're going to publish the application within that press release.
On the press release, yes.
Okay. We are working to try to update the website, to add the Boards and Committees tab back on. And one of the things that Mr. Jimison wants to see happen is an expansion of that to include all of information about all the boards that you appoint to.
Yeah, yeah.
To expand that application process to try to gain more interest on, on those boards. So unfortunately, he's not here today. So we just kind of want to give you an update on where we are with board appointments and what's coming down the road.
Thanks for the details and the update. Item 33.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for public purposes if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest pursuant to ORC 121 dot two-two G2.
I'll move to.
Second, call for vote.
Commissioner Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBorac.
Yes.
And who's going?
Jessica and I.
Okay. I have you in at 10:26. I screwed these milers up, Christie, they're just a pass. I didn't know what to do with them. Thrown in a pile.
Thrown in a pile.
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, I have you returning at 10:51.
No action. Anything else?
No.
I can give you an update on the airport if you want it, or Kristy's got some of those wrong.
I do have one more item.
Oh, yes.
So, the...
Could we have one meeting here, sir?
I'm sorry, we returned. I have one additional item. The Agricultural Society has completed the construction of their poultry and sale barn on the fairgrounds, and we have accounted for the use of the funds that were provided by the Commissioner's office. And so, we are asking the Commissioner's office to request the county auditor to release the bond being held for the Jog County Agricultural Society to construct a new poultry barn and new sale barn on the Jog County fairgrounds as the funding of $750,000 was expended for its intended purpose and all specifications of the project are complete. And in accordance with ORC 1711.15 and 1711.16, and an accounting of the funds for the purposes for which they were provided has been conducted.
Second. Call for vote.
Mr. Brecken?
Hi.
Mr. DeBoer?
Yes.
That is all I have.
Oh, I was just going to give you an update on the airport if you wanted.
Sure.
So, I think it was October 16th was the last time the airport came before us. I did receive a response, an email from them that day. Fortunately, didn't fully answer my questions, but we had some back and forth. And, you know, this is essentially what I found out. So, there, in the operating agreement between the Commissioners and the airport, there is an obligation of the Commissioners to provide $25,000 per year in a grant match. And so, that's our obligation per the terms of the agreement. Now, obviously, this year, they've gotten a lot more than $25,000, right? They've gotten almost $150,000 just for the parallel taxiway project alone as the local match. And then, there's also the $800,000 that they received for the teehanger project. They are now calling that $800,000 a grant rather than a local match. And they're saying they could ask us for another $30,000 as the local match, which I find a bit concerning because all of our requests for actions that came before us regarding that money, that $800,000 was framed as a local match. So, I'm a bit disturbed about that, but I suspect there will be opportunities in the future to discuss it further. But beyond that obligation of the $25,000 grant match per year, I mean, they finally admitted that there is no obligation of the Commissioners to provide additional money for a change order. And if ODOT doesn't, they don't cover change orders. So, we don't have, but there's no obligation for the Commissioners to pick that up. Now, we voluntarily, like, it's a may not a shall. We can pick up that amount if we want to. It says, per the terms of the agreement, they can request additional money beyond the $25,000, but there's nothing that forces us to do that. So, I don't know if that was ignorance that they thought there was and there wasn't, or if it was more willful. I don't know which one is worse, but at least we did kind of get to the bottom of that.
Well, thanks for your tough questions, and it's all good. And we'll find out what it is. And every county runs the airport a little bit different. So, and I've been asking questions from other county commissioners. But I appreciate your due diligence.
Yeah, and I mean, I think one thing I'm kind of curious about is, so, by the end of the year, they will have received, I think, close to a million dollars from the Commissioners. And then, are they going to go in January and say, oh, the terms of the agreement says you guys owe us $25,000 for this year? To me, it seems like that should, if we're going to give them a million dollars in one year, we should be good for a while. And if there's a, you know, voluntarily, if we want to provide more, that's an option. But, yeah, I think that's something that we should be thinking about.
Right, but sometimes if FAA offers a county $4 million, if the Commissioners' match is $150,000, then it's something that we will dig in and see if it's valid.
Right, I mean, right, and I agree that there, it may make sense, but I don't, I'm a bit concerned about this idea, like, hey, you guys owe us this, when we've already provided, you know, nearly a million dollars in local tax dollars this year.
But my premise was, you know, the $800,000 plus with Congressman Joyce's office, $585,000. That will build their teehanger and have a little bit of money left over to go towards fixing the roof or whatever grounds it has to be, you know.
I wasn't aware there would be anything left over.
Well, I...
I thought that was with the 1.33 that was originally agreed to. But I thought with the 800, that was just going to pay for that.
800 and 585, you know, and so, once in a while, not often, but once in a while, the construction costs are what your expectations are, and sometimes they're a little bit low. And after changes for valued engineering, then the price comes down a little bit for whatever reason during the process of the construction. So, to get them on the road of actually being an enterprise company where they can make $30,000 to $40,000 a year and save that money one or two years and then fix a roof, so then have them be gradually self-sustaining so they don't have to come through the Commissioner's office.
Yeah, I mean, they need to do that by raising their hangar rents, but I don't want to get back into that again.
There's a lot of reasons.
I don't want to talk about supply and demand curves again. I feel like I've talked enough about that. But there are ways, they do have ways for them to increase their revenue, which is increasing prices.
Yes. We'll just keep an eye on it.
Yep, keep an eye on it.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Call for vote?
I'll, if you may.
Aye. Did we sign everything?